Hi, welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen meeting, June 19th, 2017. We do have a pretty full agenda. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out of order if we can because we have a Girl Scout troop here that I want to spend a couple extra minutes with, so I'm gonna get some, if it's okay with you gentlemen, we can get some, some of the business that's gonna be pretty quickly done here. Can I get a motion for the signing of the warrant?
Moved. Second.
I'll make that unanimous. An approval of the June 5th minutes.
Moved, Mr. Chairman. Second.
All vote in the affirmative as well, that's unanimous. And then I'd like to go to our first public hearing, Dulane Enterprises. Tony Burton Ozzy, will you come on up? David, I'll let you take it in one second. I just want to let the public know that this is a change of manager for Dulane Enterprises doing business at Central Tavern at 31 Central Street. We received your application and rescheduled you for this evening, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You may recall, we were here about four years ago, and at that point in time, these two gentlemen with me, Paul Acavelli and Al Pagetti, they are the principals of Dulane Enterprises at this point. And we came before you, and you were gracious enough to transfer the license over to the Central Tavern. They've been operating down there for the past four years, doing very well, no problems. Everything is moving very smoothly, lots of fun nightclubs, I mean, and bands and...
Absolutely.
...on their acts, and it's a great place to go and spend an evening. So, at this point in time, Al had retired, Mr. Pagetti who had retired from the Milford Fire Department right before that issue was, is actually going to retire, for real this time. And so, and so, Mr. Acavelli is going to be buying out his interest. And initially, Mr. Pagetti was the named manager on the license, and so, we'd like to change that over to Mr. Acavelli. Mr. Acavelli is a principal of Cappies in Oxbridge, had been doing that long before the Central Tavern came into existence. Another buyer that has no problems, has no issues, has always run very smoothly. And, you know, we would hope that the board would accommodate us and allow this, allow this change.
Okay, that's great. I mean, we received all the information, and as of late, the workman's compensation paperwork, so everything's in order as far as I can tell. Bill, any questions?
No, I just want to say this. I want to say that, you know, Mr. Pagetti has done an outstanding job at that location. He took what was sometimes a problematic license and alcohol establishment bar, and made it something that everybody feels comfortable going into. You've done a fantastic job there. I know it took a lot of work when you first moved in there, letting it be known to the former patrons and new patrons, that there was low tolerance on silliness and whatnot, and I know it takes a lot to do that. But I think you've made it the establishment that you've wanted, and it's a place folks feel safe, as I said before. So, I just want to say, before we changed the manager, I just wanted to, I haven't had the opportunity to do that in a while. So, you know, it's not all about hearings and what happens, whether licenses are modified or revoked because there's an issue, but sometimes you have to give praise to a location that's really done a great job, and now you've done that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the change of manager to Mr. Paul Acavelli. And, that's it.
I would second that.
Mike, I just wanted to make sure that while we're in conversation here, does anything you'd like to add?
First of all, I'll say thank you to Al for your years of service to the town of Milford. I've known you and Paul for years, and I have no doubt that Paul will run the same establishment that both of you ran together. So, thank you to the both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll also vote in favor to make that unanimous. Good luck, and I'm sure I'll see you both soon. Have a good night.
Thank you.
That was fast, David.
Bye, Joe.
Good luck.
Take care.
Now, if we could, Amy, could we, could you come on up and bring graduating Girl Scouts with you, and whoever else you'd like to come up?
Now, don't be nervous.
No, just so the public knows, and then Amy, I'm gonna turn it over to you, just to, you know, say a few words or introduce the ladies, or if they want to have anything to say. I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but we'd love to hear from you. I received an email from Amy, well, it seems like a long time ago, but it was a few weeks ago, and now we're working, luckily, Rick was able to work with you and get a date that you folks come in here. So, this is a group of two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 young ladies that are graduating after serving years in the Girl Scouts. That's quite an accomplishment. Amy, I'd just like to pass it along to you, and...
And 12 girls to graduate high school Girl Scouts is quite an accomplishment. So, many of them have started in kindergarten, some in first grade, third, some joined in high school. Along the way, to see 12 girls commit to something and do it through high school, and all the, you know, there's of course the fun stuff, there's all the fun stuff, you know, the trips, the whitewater rafting, and the zip lines, but, you know, along with being a Girl Scout comes all that other community service, and they have just embraced all of that, and they've done dozens and dozens. I think I tallied them up, it was like 22 service projects with all of them, well, cleanups, planting flowers and tulips, helping at churches with food pantries, and Salvation Army, and they just do, they embrace it all. They come up with an idea, they always like their ideas, not mine. Mine usually gets shot down.
You're raising independent women.
They have their ideas, we got to make it happen, they do the work, and it's been quite a joy to watch them give back to the community as Girl Scouts. We have a representative of half of them here today, you know, those 18-year-olds, time to pin them all down.
Oh, that's for sure.
...orientations, airwork, and everything else, but we have our nice contingency, and they're very proud. Milford should be very proud of...
No, and Milford would forward this many Girl Scouts to go through high school. No, and that's why I'm glad we could work out a date, because this is the, these are one of the many things that I think we are lucky, because we actually get to show you ladies off and kind of brag about this, because to show such commitment at such a young age, I mean, that's quite an accomplishment. Obviously, not everyone does that. You have peers that don't, and you ladies are here. We do have citations for you, and I'd like to get a photo later on if we can, if Mr. Rudden and Zach could entertain us. But I would like to turn it over to the board, because I'm sure my colleagues have something to add as well. Bill?
Well, and I just want to thank you, because the community service that was just talked about is important to the community. It, it may not seem like a lot, but when people are contributing positive things, it becomes infectious. So, we want to thank you. I want to thank you on behalf of the community. I want to thank your leadership and the, for the coaching, because, you know, they take a lot of time out of their day, right, to do and to help. And hopefully, you see this as a small stepping stone, in that you're active in college, in leadership, you're active in ways that, you know, maybe RA in the dorms, maybe, you know, student government within college, but this has set a great foundation for you. You've been active in this community, and very helpful, and I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Bill. Mike?
So, the first question I have, so the Boy Scouts get Eagle Scouts. What is the same platform on the Girl Scouts?
The Gold Award is equivalent to the Eagle Scout and Girl Scouts, so...
So, you have a service project that you have to do?
I was the only one who actually, who completed the Gold Award project, so...
And what was your project?
I built a kiosk at Pepicorn Trail.
I'm sorry, where?
At Pepicorn Trail. It's off Camp Street.
You did that? That's awesome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Buckley. I think it's very important, don't ever forget leadership. You know, that's one of the problems that we have in this great nation of ours today, is we don't have a lot of great leaders. So, make a difference, you know, and I as well want to say thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, Mike. And what I'd like to do is just read all of the young ladies' names, and then I'll actually turn it over to you ladies, if there's anything else that you'd like to add, before we present you with some citations. The graduating Girl Scouts are Kelsey Anderson, Morgan Blaney, Sidney Blaney, Caitlin Brock, Ally Buckenmire, Brianna Croto, Alexa Decotis, Kate France, Kate France, Morgan Michelson, Diane Reardon, Emma Ryan, and Sophie Scrimger. I just want to make sure, especially for ladies that aren't here, that we acknowledge them. We do have a citation for each one of the ladies. It says, "Be it known that the Board of Selectmen hereby offer their congratulations in recognition of your longtime commitment as a Girl Scout and your work on many projects which have improved and enhanced the town of Milford. On behalf of the people of Milford, the Selectmen extend their very best wishes and express the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all your endeavors, given this 19th day of June 2017. Signed by Michael K. Walsh, William D. Buckley, and William Kincaid." Congratulations, ladies. Is, is there anything that any of you would like to add, without me putting you on the spot at all, or, which I guess is too late, but I certainly would like...
You're on the spot now.
You know, if there's anything you'd like to add, or brag about, or maybe even say a few words about your leaders. That was a little, that was a little coaxing.
Well, so my, the leader is also my mom, and I've seen her gone through the stress of planning everything, but then we always get it pulled off, and it's always fun, so... And I, she's just great, so...
Oh, that's terrific. And that's, that's, you have, we have that forever now. We're gonna have to get you the CD.
Mr. Chairman, just, I just want to add one more thing. You know, I get the opportunity occasionally to see great people and great, you know, activities and things that are happening with the community and leaders like yourself. Too frequently, our social media will, will pick on the things that are wrong with Milford. And what I'd like to see them write about are some of you young ladies, and some of the young people that we get the opportunity to meet, and highlight some of the positive things in the community, because we can always find things in a community somebody, something doesn't, somebody doesn't like. But hopefully, this is something that folks will write about. I doubt it, and that's sad, but, you know, I would like to see a little bit more of people finding some of the positive things in Milford, and you guys are great examples of that, so thank you.
That's for sure. Now, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll call your names, and then hopefully, or do we, you know, well, yeah, let's do this, and maybe we'll take a little recess, so that we can get a photo of you folks.
Okay.
And should I just give you the ones for the ladies who are in here?
Yeah, sure.
Kelsey Anderson?
She's Kelsey Anderson, and the next two.
All right. Well, you got this down.
Yeah. I know them well.
Caitlin Brock. Congratulations. Ally Buckenmire? Alexa Decotis? Kate France? Emma Ryan? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Sophie Scrimger?
Thanks.
Now, if we can, Dan, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, if that's okay?
We can do that.
All right, thank you. We'll be, we'll be back. All right. Thank you to the, to the viewing public. We just want to take a few minutes to spend with the Girl Scout troop before they head it out. The next order of business for scheduled appointments is an update on the town meeting committee, and we have Reno DeLuzio and Steve Tredle with us this evening. Gentlemen.
Let's start off, and briefly acknowledge that Reno and Jose have done the lion's share of analysis on, on the, on the report. And I'm gonna turn this over right to Reno to give you a summary of what, what they've come up with.
Perfect.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, you've all heard my report to the town meeting this past May, but I want to just take your indulgence for a little while to just introduce who we are and what we're doing, because there's a new audience who may not know what's going on. By way of background, a town meeting improvement initiative was started by the Citizens for Milford to make our town meeting a more pleasurable and informative experience, improve attendance, and incentivize more of our citizens to take this important office in order to preserve the town meeting for future generations. To that end, a 13-member town meeting working group was formed, consisting of three Citizens for Milford members, a town meeting member from each precinct, an at-large member, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and they are Peter Scandoni, who is Citizens for Milford member and a chairman of the working group, Steve Tredle, Citizens for Milford, who is here tonight, Kim Smith, a Citizens for Milford member, moderator Mike Knofree, and member at large, Selectmen William Buckley, Richard Heller from Precinct One, Jose Costa from Precinct Two, Tom Harmon from Precinct Three, Mike Buntembo from Precinct Four, George Marino from Precinct Five, Paul Melnali Precinct Six, myself from Precinct Seven, and Mike Viscani from Precinct Eight. The working group completed a survey, sent out to all 248 town meeting members, and received responses last March. The overall survey response was terrific. Of the 248 members who were sent to questionnaire, 192, or 77%, responded. You know, typical responses for this kind of survey are in the order of 35 to 45 percent. As I reported a town meeting, the survey result, raw data, reflected good news. A special significance to the health of our town meeting was reflected by the answers to question three, which said, "Overall, how satisfied are you with the way the town meeting operates?" The combined "very satisfied" and "satisfied" response was 80 percent. However, the preliminary report to town meeting only addressed the survey raw data, not the comments, which I'll give you an overview this evening. It was most encouraging that of the 192 respondents, 168, or 88%, took the extra time to submit comments. This is where we really get into what's on the town meeting members' minds. There were a total of 686 comments submitted. Of the 686, 154 were submitted for the question, "What do you like most about town meeting", 189 were submitted for the question, "What do you dislike most about town meeting", 56 were submitted for the group of questions which addressed satisfaction with the information provided prior to town meeting, 70 were submitted for the group of questions which addressed satisfaction with the clarity of information presented at the meeting, 41 were submitted for the group of questions which addressed town meeting participation, 81 were submitted to the request for reasons why members seldom or rarely or never speak, and 95 were submitted to the request for additional information in what's, how you feel, what you feel could be done to improve the town meeting. So, overall, that's the distribution of the members relative to the major categories of the questions in the questionnaire. Now, although the working group has a lot of work to do in categorizing, combining, and prioritizing the comments, some predominant themes have arisen. For the question, "What do you like most about town meeting?", the most predominant themes were purest form of democracy, town meeting members' ability to speak freely and represent people in each district, every registered voter gets an opportunity to be heard and express their opinion, moderator does an excellent job managing the meeting and moving it along, and it's well organized and structured. For the question, "What do you dislike most about Milford's town meeting?", and throughout the survey, the most predominant themes seem to focus on speaker time limits, the same people get up and talk, the length of the meeting, audiovisual system quality, including speaker issues at the mic, the content and clarity of visual presentations, the content and timeliness of information available to members prior to town meeting, questions on articles that do not get answered by the sponsor, our voting method, being recognized to speak, and decorum and conduct of town meeting members. Now, that's a very broad overview, and like I said, there are 686 comments that the working group now has to drill into to see what more is there that I haven't presented here. But we thought, as we said at the beginning, we would provide updates to the Selectmen as this process goes along. So, now I'll give it back to Steve, and he'll tell us where we're going.
Obviously, it's, it's a lot of work to do one of these surveys, but we were really gratified by the response, especially by the comments, which they had to take the time to do extra. So, we, we think we got a good sense of, you know, what town meeting members would like to see improved. And they're not huge, but there's tweaking, and tweaking, if, if we truly can end up responding to these things by tweaking here and there, I think we're gonna have a lot more people willing to participate in, in the town meeting. And that's really one of our goals, you know. We want, our goals in, in going forward here is we want an organized and efficient town meeting. We want to, for every member of town meeting to believe that they, they have the opportunity to speak. We want members and residents well informed about each article in a timely basis, and we want up-to-date technology, bringing us into what really can be done with technology to really help people understand what the heck it is they're voting on. So, where we're going from this is, after we finish, as Reno says, drilling down here, we will make specific recommendations.
Great.
Okay? And then we intend to come back to the board and present those recommendations. Okay? And then, our next step would be to bring those recommendations in the form of an article to town meeting, and our goal is in October.
Wow.
And we think that's doable.
It's aggressive.
Very ambitious.
We think that's doable.
Well, it's, it's a volume of work here that, you know, everybody's busy today. We put as much time as we can, but you know how these things go, but at least we've got a target, which is, which is very good. We can try to keep hold, hold of that target.
And beyond that, if, if approved or modified, or whatever is approved at town meeting, we would volunteer to go ahead and work on the, what would we call it?
Implementation.
I meant the booklet.
Oh, the handbook.
The booklet that town meeting members get, and incorporate all this stuff into that booklet, whatever is approved at town meeting.
That's great.
That's a goal.
Oh, that's terrific, because I know, before I turn it over to my colleagues, the last, our last Board of Selectmen's meeting, I think we talked about some feedback that even the three of us received after the last town meeting, with start times, hopefully end times. If we're gonna go to a second night, why did we go to 12:30 the first night, things like, even though that wasn't planned, you know, we got a lot of feedback, some very aggressive feedback, at 12:30, quarter to one, while people were heading out. And we know the, I know you said they were pretty much, you know, general topics, but of the feedback of the likes and dislikes, I gotta tell you, you might as well have been talking the, exactly how I feel. I mean, I think that's probably a, a lot of what the, you know, what the folks generally are gonna, are gonna feel like. And I think, you know, something about even the technology, some people put up, Mr. Sanborn put up slides, such large font, you could see it from, if you were standing at the entrance of Town Hall. Other folks, I think we even have to get to the point where we know, at least with article sponsors, or people who are planning to, to do something, tell them, "This is the font it's gotta be, if you're gonna see it from the whole thing." I mean, these are things sometimes you don't think of, because we do presentations at work in much smaller rooms with much fewer people. But even deciding the, the font and the type set and things like that can make a world of difference, even though it's something very simple. But I know, I certainly appreciate what you guys are doing, and I, I wrote down that list because I couldn't believe that, I mean, you were pretty much reading, reading my mind when it comes to the things that I, I experienced. So, Bill, I don't know if you wanna...
Yeah, no, this makes sense, and, you know, if our visual presentations can't be seen by all the members, we need to fix that. And, and some of it is font size, some of it is what we provide to them, by way of that screen in the background, that type of thing. So, I think there's things that we can do from a technology standpoint, but one of the questions I had for you is, I know you looked at some best practices and some things other towns were, were looking into, or had implemented, and, you know, taking advantage of technology, communicating in a better way. What were some of the things you came across that either surprised you, or you found that people were very successful with?
Some of the things that surprised me was the, how some communities really get into the town meeting in terms of, well, for example, if, if there's roads to be approved, or, or a piece of land to be acquired by the town, they have buses that take the town meeting members out to see it, those that are interested in it.
That's good. How about, by way of speeding up votes and that type of thing, was there's any, anything people were using from a technology standpoint?
Some, some people are, are starting to use electronic voting.
Okay, all right.
Which brings, brings up an issue that I wanted to, not an issue, but in, in providing our recommendations, okay, we, most of our recommendations will be supported by this survey. However, the other things we learned were, the things, as you pointed out, were from other towns, and people may not be aware of them, or we, we didn't put them into the survey. And we intend to probably have some of those on our list of recommendations as well.
Okay. Then we've gotta look for funding, and you're part of that process as well, so, town meeting funding, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that point eventually.
Good. Yeah, I think, it makes sense, right? And to Will's point, you know, the chairman's point, and it was an interesting point, because I, you know, I don't know why it escaped me from the beginning. Lots of us do presentations, but we do presentations in rooms this size.
Yeah.
Frankly, I don't know that I've ever been part of any presentation anywhere, even large acquisitions of companies, where they, they're in a forum that large, in a room that big. So, you, there's special things to consider.
Yes, yeah.
Especially the voice, and the, and the size of what you put up, and the simplicity of what you put up.
So, I think, you know, Rick's been in the forefront in terms of making sure that our speaker systems were better balanced, our speaker systems were improved, our microphone, our podium. One of the things I've noticed, though, is you still won't get passed if somebody speaks far from the microphone, or speaks close to the microphone.
We'll have to put a big sign on the podium.
Yeah, it's in, so, you know, that's just people becoming familiar, but I think we can do well with audio, better with audiovisual. I think we can improve what people are voting on for planning articles, zoning articles.
Yeah. There's so much technology available now.
There is.
And, and it's readily implemented now.
In the category of presentations that are made in committee and board reports, I think some improvements can be made. You know, planning boards' articles are very technical, the zoning changes are really not written in plain English.
That's the alphabet, alphabet soup.
You know, people's eyes glaze over, so some improvement in how to get what's going on in more plain language would help. There's a whole category of things we, we've got on our shopping list to drill down on. And to your point, Will, the, I believe, I recall, of course, the survey was done when we started this, a couple of years ago now. Lexington has a very, I think it's either Lexington or Amber, I forget, has a very elaborate handbook, where they lay down all the details on what's required before you get to town meeting and present your, your case. So, you know, we'll, we'll be, we'll be drawing from best practices, yeah. So, that's what I say, we've got, we've got a whole Sears Robot catalog full of stuff, we've gotta pick and choose from.
The other thing is, we're not going to involve more people and have the ability to get larger and larger quorums and larger people participating, if there's even a risk of people going to 12:30. So...
Oh, yeah, no.
It just doesn't work for people, and, you know, people will look at our boards sometimes and look at the makeup and say, "Hey, you could be more diverse, there could be more women involved, there could be more mothers involved, there could be..." Those are the things that work to that detriment, because they're trying to balance a lot of things. So, you know, as an example, you know, cutoff times, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, I received some interesting feedback about it.
Yeah, that was in my category of the length of the meeting.
Yeah.
Starting early, finishing early.
Earlier.
People can, you know... People can, you know, pay attention to getting to work the next morning without being exhausted. Balanced with children can probably attend more if the hours are more reasonable. So those are the kinds of themes that kinda pop out right throughout the survey. That I think we're all, we've heard anecdotally, right, over the years. But now we've got some numerical data to back up what everybody's feeling, so.
Thing is, overall, you know, well, I'll speak for Reno and I, but many of the members on this committee as well. There was a, one of the comments on there was, this is the purest form of democracy. And we really believe that, and we really wanna preserve it, and we wanna make it robust and something that people want to participate in.
Well, from your professional experience, you know, no cooperation can go on for 45 years without some self-examination.
Exactly.
Something's gotta give someplace, right?
That's why I don't think of them as problems. I think of them as opportunities for improvement, and I know that's the way you're approaching it.
Exactly.
I say there's some low-hanging fruit, things we can get at right away that doesn't require a lot of debate. Like, a large majority was in favor of having the Pledge of Allegiance said at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but that's easy to say yes or no. I mean, that's not a big issue.
You know what, that's great. I wonder why we don't say the Pledge of Allegiance before our meetings here. We have the flag right there.
I hope I didn't stick an honest ass there, but anyway.
No, but that might be happening starting next meeting, Reno, thank you.
Anyway, so I, you know, Bill, you know, you're a vocal member of the group, and you convey any comments that the board has, and we'll entertain whatever it is.
We've spent hard with the Monday meetings.
No, I know, yeah, right.
I said that right at the beginning. Monday meetings are a challenge for me.
But we know you're there if we need you, that's what's important.
That's right, anytime.
At least, yeah, you at least have a liaison that you can reach. Mike, is there anything you'd like to add?
I wanna commend your group for your efforts, because, you know, as the great Tip O'Neill said, all politics is local. And people have to understand that what happens at town meeting has a greater impact on their life than what happens on the federal level.
You bet.
You know, and they have to understand that. So, you know, for your group to take on this chore of trying to fine-tune the town meeting, I commend you for that. And Will and I were sitting next to, at town meeting, and later on in the evening, I kept saying to Will, I said, we're losing, we're losing, and we're looking out in the crowd and we see more and more people.
Yeah.
As they, they're getting tired, you know? And so now we're, you know, people are wondering what's gonna happen to the quorum. So I agree, there needs to be time set, time ended. We have to go into another night, we have to go into another night. But at least going in, you know that. As a town meeting member, you know, if it gets to 10 o'clock at night, whatever the time is that we set, it's gonna end, and we're gonna come back the following night. So that's gonna help ramp up your involvement, because if people get the, you know, they get all the articles, they look, it's, oh my God, this is gonna be an 11 o'clocker. And they might have a business meeting the next day, they might have something with their child, they may be traveling. They're gonna say, jeez, I'm really not gonna go. So if we put down rules and regulations going in, then people are gonna say, you know what, I know it's gonna be busy tonight, but I'll be out of there by 10, and I'll have to be back there on Wednesday night or whatever it is. So I think that's key. And the other thing is, and I agree with you on the speakers, you need to limit the speakers. And I think the reason more people don't speak is because the same people speak.
Exactly.
Okay, so I think, you know, if I was a town meeting member and I was gonna go speak on a particular article, I'd be versed going to the podium. What I would have to say, I would only have to say once. I don't have to get up over and over and over. I'm gonna make my point. As the old saying is, the least said is easiest repaired. Get up, make your point, make your point, and sit down and let the next person make their point. So I think you, you know, the points that you bring up tonight are spot on, and we need to stay focused on them. And I think if we do, you'll see a lot greater involvement in town meeting.
Yeah, just to your point, Mike, about one or two night meetings, when you get to half the meeting and the clock is running, people shy away from debate.
Right.
If they know they got some breathing room. Sometimes you go to the first meeting, at the meeting, at the end you come to a thought, I should have brought that up. You know, there's always a possibility a town meeting can reconsider an article. So you give a town meeting a chance to breathe, come back another night, or if we don't finish it one night. It opens up all those opportunities again, so they can be more active in their role as a town meeting member, not be pressured to finish by such and such a time, says we gotta finish it one night. Some towns go seven nights, I mean, that's ridiculous, but, you know, that's, we don't wanna get into that mode. But, you know, a couple of nights is not unreasonable, and if it's scheduled ahead. One of the, more than one comment said, we should have the meeting day established, if possible, the same time every year, you know, what day of the month, what two nights of the month, because people, their activities, six, eight, sometimes a year in advance. Again, that gives people an opportunity to attend more, because they have, they know they can put it on their calendar early. Now, I know you're under time limits because of state statutes and things you have to do in a certain time. But if we, you know, we get to the details of that, maybe some arrangement can be made. We can get notice ahead of time. So all those things are, all those things individually probably don't amount to much, but you collectively put them all together, and now you've got something that will wrench the town, you know, ratchet the town meeting up a notch or two, which is what we're looking for.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you again.
Yep.
Have a good evening.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.
Next agenda item is the Town Administrator's Report, Rick.
Yes. Four items tonight, Mr. Chairman. The first, I hope everybody noticed the landscaping on the other side, if they did come in. I wanna thank Carlos Benjamin, Facilities Director, Lester Simmons, Custodian, Mark Venziano, excuse me, for their hard work in removing the shrubbery, which was the real hard work, and then planting the replacement shrubs and spreading mulch. I think everybody that's commented so far is, I think it's a very significant improvement. So again, just wanna thank them. I wanna also remind everyone, the fireworks display will be held on Monday, July 3rd, with the rain date of Wednesday, July 5th. It will be necessary to close Milford Pond at noon time, as the explosives will then be on site. Fishing and boating will be allowed in the morning, but then regulated thereafter. We did receive notice today on the MS-4 general permit. The EPA has agreed to stay the effective date of the permit. Originally, it was July 1st, 2017, which is fast approaching. They've agreed to stay that pending appeal. They've also agreed to stay the due date for the notice of intent to be filed, which was September 1st, 2017. That was a notice we received today. The EPA, as I understand it, is still working on the details on how it will provide notice of the stay. We expect a further announcement from them next week. So basically, that's all I have right now. The final item, Mr. Chairman, is, as this board remembers, one of our best practices was to, the ADA transition plan, to prepare a new plan. I'm pleased to report that we applied for and received a grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Commonwealth by and through the Massachusetts Office on Disability to update our self-evaluation and transition plan. We will now be looking to retain a consultant to help us complete that plan. The plan will be expected to include all town buildings, school buildings, parks, recreation areas. So I'm very pleased by that, and I hope to have further information for the board in the upcoming meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
That's great. Any questions, Mike or Bill?
Just a quick comment, who wrote the grant for the $30,000?
I did, with some assistance.
Nice job, Rick, thank you very much. That's, that's significant. I don't wanna downplay the mulch and the landscaping and all of that. It looks great, and I did notice it. There were a lot of things that you put in there into that report that means a lot to this community, that $30,000 grant for the folks that have disabilities within this community and how to get them greater access is just something that, you know, this board oughta, you know, take notice of. And I wanna thank you personally.
Thank you.
The MS-4 permit, I'm just, that's great news. It's great news until we get through any litigation or anything else that we're working through. And hopefully, they, it delays long enough that they have an opportunity to consider having Massachusetts DEP represent the federal government in the application of anything they come out with. I know that's been proposed, right?
Yes.
And you've communicated that, but thank you, a lot of good things, thank you for everything.
Good job, Rick, thank you.
Thank you, Rick, thank you.
Okay, now we have an old business, Bill? Any old business?
Yeah, I just wanted to get back to a couple of things. I'm glad the chief came in for something else. But I wanted to see, we had talked a little bit about 75 Highland Street. The chief had given us a report, and the chief had also demonstrated a willingness to meet with neighbors. I'm just wondering how we make that happen, such that, you know, neighbors are notified and, you know, I think, on 75 Highland?
Yeah, that is on the agenda.
We're gonna talk about properties in general.
Okay. And then the, okay, and then the other piece I wanted to talk about was, you know, where the task force is going. And we asked to see if there was any opportunities to improve, include more data communications, what the opportunities are and how we might take advantage of those opportunities and implement them. So if there's an update for a future meeting, I just wanted to bring it up to keep it on, keep us on task and make sure we're staying with it.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill. Mike? Rick, I did have some old business as well. I was hoping that maybe we could get another. I know it's been a little while, you updated us on the Archel Rubber site some time ago.
Sure.
I just had a couple of folks, literally two folks, reach out to me just in the last couple of days, just to ask how it was going. They're still obviously doing some work down there. And one gentleman in particular is just very concerned about, obviously, the site being right on the Charles. I don't think a lot of people realize that that building was built literally over the Charles, and there was running water that went through there. So, just driving by, as we all can see, they just wondered if there are contaminants, and it is the Charles, and, you know, I think people just wanna, you know, if we could even get, you know, an informal reports to see where they're at and...
We can do that.
I think, Rick, to the chairman's point, I think what's brought that up is that the last couple of days has been some equipment down there, and they've been actually breaking up concrete right on the side of the river. So, as you know, that's a busily, busy traveled road, and I think that's what's brought it up.
Okay. Can have that for the, should be able to have that for the next meeting, no problem. A little sooner.
And I was hoping to maybe, and obviously, we have a full agenda tonight, so maybe at the next meeting, if we, I don't know if you've been able to reach out to Amy Neves, the town clerk, about maybe how we would wanna set up that election committee?
I have talked to Amy briefly on that, and we can...
No, I appreciate it, because I know you've kinda had your hands full lately, so I just wanna make sure that, we keep it on the agenda, but I know that it certainly isn't necessarily extremely time-sensitive, but once we do form that group, I'd like to at least give them a good amount of time, at least by the fall, to get started and go from there. And also, I was hoping that maybe you can, between you, the Building Commissioner and the Town Planner, there seems to be some confusion of what a permanent sign is. And I know we had that conversation at town meeting.
Yep.
Some of us think a permanent sign is one permanent sign, other people, that was what the planning board thought. Other folks are saying, no, these are all temporary. So I think, you know, I can't even answer constituents when I don't know the definition. And when you look at the bylaw, there is not a definition. So we either need a definitions page, or at least we need to refer back to the, to the, to the planning board and at least maybe get their opinion. I mean, I'll leave that to you on the best way to do that, because I do think the planning board would have to be involved. And I think there is conversation going on between planning board members among themselves, as well as the Town Planner. But they seem to think one thing, the Building Commissioner seems to think another, and I can intelligently answer a very simple question. And I know, you know, some letters have gone out to some people with signs, other people, they haven't received them with signs. So I think we need to just kinda try to wrap this up once and for all.
Yep.
And you covered the task force update, so I'm all set on old business. So I guess we're moving on to new business.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I just wanna go backwards. If we could get the task force as part of our, an upcoming agenda, that would be good. And then, secondly, if we have concerns about the Archel Rubber site, and there are reasons why people don't remove concrete, by the way, in former industrial properties. And generally speaking, and I'm not saying that's the case here, but generally speaking, they're wary of what's underneath it. But if they're breaking up concrete at the edge of the Charles River, the banks of the Charles River, we can ask the DEP to come in and look at that site. If there's some samples that need to be taken, tell them we have concerns. We oughta voice those concerns and work with our state agencies.
Okay. Have to give Rick's hand a break here for a second. All right, moving on to new business. Town Treasurer sent us a letter regarding bonds. Rick, I don't know if you want me to read this or go through it, or if you wanna summarize it?
I could summarize.
Either way, it's fine, so.
Okay, he's provided the board with a memo. It's for approval of a short-term bond anticipation note for the Woodland Elementary School project. First of all, it's something that is expected, routine. I think, as you know, we now hit the 95% reimbursement mark. So we won't be receiving the final 5% until the project is 100% complete and then audited by the MSBA. This could be not until sometime next year. So what he's looking for, I believe, is just for one month. And this will satisfy what he needs to do. If we don't do it, we could look at a deficit, it could have an effect on free cash. So again, it's expected, it's routine, and it's something we need to do. The vote is very specific, I think we put, Chris put what the vote should be from the board. But again, it's just due to the fact we're waiting for final reimbursement from the MSBA.
No, and that's how I understood it, that it's very common, and quite honestly...
It shouldn't be concerned or anything like that.
Just so the public knows, too, borrowing $450,000 for more or less one month at a rate of 1% comes out to...
$375?
$375 worth of interest. So to be able, us to make all of our commitments for a few hundred dollars is a no-brainer.
So it's, again, a very specific vote the board should make, and...
The pleasure of the board?
And that's, you know, just to say, I know if Zach were here, Chris were here, they'd tell you that we're borrowing at that rates because of our financial strength and our annual audit report. So people wonder why we wanna have stabilization where we do. It's when we wanna do things like this, we can do it in very short, short order at very low rates, so. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to award the $450,000 Town of Milford Massachusetts Bond Aid Anticipation Notes dated June 28th, 2017, and maturing July 28th, 2017, to Century Bank at a rate of 1%.
Second that?
I'll also vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next order are annual appointments and reappointments. And I just wanted to add and then speak to the board that we have a number of folks that are in the Talent Bank. And when I became chairman, one of my priorities, or hopeful priorities, was giving some folks in the Talent Bank that have been waiting for, some for quite a few years, to, the ability to serve if that opportunity exists. So I know we have a few vacancies and whatnot, so I'm hoping that we can get through, get through that. And hopefully, you guys have been able to go through this over the weekend and see what we can move on. Bill?
Yeah, I think Rick had something relative to the geriatric, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just want to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Relate to the board that I am one of the members up for reappointment to the Geriatric Authority as a trustee. The last year or so, I've been considering whether or not I should continue and would be able to continue. So I will be resigning tonight. I just would like to say, I've been a member since 1993, 1994, and it's been a very great experience for me. I have noticed in the last year or so, it's been difficult with the dual role of town administrator and sometimes getting to meetings, staying at meetings, and some potential conflicts that have arisen. So I did stay this long, because we were in the process of hiring a new administrator. I did not feel it would be, I just didn't feel comfortable leaving without that new town administrator being placed. We have hired a new town administrator, new administrator, Mike Isabella, who, at least from the outset, in the last few weeks when he started, I think is going to be a great asset.
Oh, so you literally just appointed him?
We just appointed him just in the last month or so, yeah. We appointed him further, but he couldn't start, given other obligations and what have you. So it was important for me and to the people I was working with to stay to that. Now that that has been complete, I do wanna reiterate, though, or reinforce, that as the town administrator, I still think I can be beneficial to that board. And I've reached out to Dave Consigli and told him that. So a lot of the functions I was doing, I think I could still do, and maybe we can get another member in there, trustee with some fresh ideas and some new ideas. So it's been a great experience, it's been a long time experience.
23 years, I hadn't realized that, wow.
I think it was somewhere in there, so it's been a long time, so. I didn't do a letter or anything, I didn't see the need, so.
Okay. Okay, no, well, thank, thank you very much for that. And I know at the very least, you're, you're hopefully still our liaison to that board. And I would like to, not knowing that you, that the Geriatric Authority appointed a new director already, maybe at some point, we could even put that on the agenda and have the group come.
Yes, I think he's going to do well.
I think even having you here, giving us a proper introduction to him and to the group. Because I know, since I've been on the board, I know I have not had the Geriatric Authority before us, even in a chance to informally, informally meet. So I know that, again, another one of my priorities was meeting with other boards and committees. Maybe if you gentlemen can entertain me for that, we could have them in as well.
Sure, absolutely.
Especially get to know the, the new administrator.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, I know you said it, but I want to make sure I reiterate the thank you to Rick and Rick for his service there. I'm guessing that we've added a lot to your plate, Rick, and that plate keeps getting more full and more full. And, but I do want to acknowledge and thank you for your years of service there.
Thank you.
And I as well would like to say thank you to a very well-run facility.
Yes, it's, it's doing very, very well and I think Mike's going to take it to the next level.
Thank you.
Okay, now, let's see.
So I can read these if.
Yeah, I mean, we usually just go right now alphabetical order. I think that's how we've done it in the past. I'm sorry, I know we do, I've done this twice already and we're still going down. So do you just want to take the, the appointments and reappointments?
Sure.
Starting from the top?
Sure.
Let me begin with making a motion for the following appointments. Rochelle Thompson, Animal Control Officer. Keith Hayes, Assistant Animal Control Officer. Leonard Oliveri, Fair Housing Director. William Tuohy, Emergency Management Director. And George Cleveland, Deputy Director.
I would second those.
I'll make that. I'll vote in the affirmative as well. That's unanimous.
Next for Commission of Disability, Jennifer Walsh, term expiring six thirty twenty. That's the case with all of, each of these. Margaret Maya, Lexus Forget. And to replace Harold Rhodes, Rachel Hasser.
I would second that.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous.
For the Commission, Conservation Commission, Noel Bontempo, Michael G M Pietro, Derek Atherton, whose terms expire six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
On the Council on Aging, Josephine Maglioka, Charles Scaff, Marcia Andriano, all the terms expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to jump over Fair Housing Committee and come back to it.
Okay.
Just to ask to make a recommendation here and a motion. Finance Committee recommending Jeff Nero, Michael Nicholson, Phil Charon Cooley, Joyce Levine, terms expiring six thirty twenty. I vote for Geriatric Authority.
I would second that.
Second?
These are motions.
I'll also vote, I'm also vote in favor. I know, I'm still, I'm still new.
I can read faster than everybody can vote.
I'll vote in favor and that's unanimous.
Sorry for the procedural. Milford Geriatric Authority appointing Francis Small and Edward Bertarelli, terms expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
Historical Commission, Ronald Moreno and Pamela Fields, terms expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor as well, make that unanimous.
All right, I'm going to, this is the name I said I would struggle with. Industrial Development Commission, Scott Kaplan, Anthony Pinto, Joseph Bosanowski.
Joe Boz.
Joe Boz. Milford, right, right from the hospital, thank you. Terms expiring six thirty twenty.
And I would second those as well.
I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
Susan Chesky, I'm sorry, Milford Cultural Council, Susan Chaky, Thomas Riley, Megan Olivera, and Christopher Vendetti, terms expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that as well.
I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
For the Personnel Board, Laura Christofouli, term expiring six thirty twenty-two.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
Register of Voters, Rosemary Belacqua, six thirty twenty, term expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
All right, and this is where I wanted to actually make, make a recommendation that we make a swap. Want to take better advantage of Attorney Falk's experience. He currently sits on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Like to go back to Fair Housing. We've got a fair number of vacancies and some work that needs to be done on that committee. So I'm going to ask Attorney Falk to go there. And the recommendation or the motion that I'm making is Fair Housing Committee, Leonard Oliveri, John Morty, Alfred Santacandro, Brian Falk, and Justin Dulack, six thirty eighteen, terms expiring. Now, these are people that have been on the committee, the Talent Bank for a long time, haven't had the opportunity to get involved because people haven't moved or, you know, for whatever reason. But I wanted to see how we could pull them in and Fair Housing Authority was one of the places that looked to be opportunity. And hopefully, they'll be happy and learn some of the process through that and then work their way through other committees and commissions. On the Zoning Board of, I'm sorry, was there a motion?
That was a motion for Fair Housing.
For Fair Housing, that was Leonard Oliveri, John Morty, Alfred Santacandro, Brian Falk, and Justin Dulack.
And I would second that.
And I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
For Zoning Board of Appeals, like to appoint Mark Casaloya and Bobby Capazello, or Robert Capazello, terms expiring for Mark Casaloya at six thirty twenty-two and Bob Capazello, six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
I certainly will, too. Nice pick. I'll make that unanimous.
On the Milford Youth Commission, we received a letter regarding a vacancy of Mr. Walsh for Lisa White. I'd like to make that recommendation. I believe that, that term also expires six thirty twenty.
Plus, Mr. Buckley, also, they, I believe that Ron Taylor has our, is a position open and he was, he's serving currently now as well.
So that, that's another vacancy?
Yes.
Do you have that on your records, two vacancies?
I believe we do have.
It's on here, but that's what confused me because there's three people up and there's also two vacancies in, in addition to that?
Right, so I believe that Kristen Kibbe, who resigned.
Yes.
Okay, that's right, Chris, and then you resigned.
And I resigned, so it'd be, your motion, I believe, would be Ron Taylor and Lisa White.
Okay, and do we know the terms that, that they had?
Six thirty nineteen.
For both White and Taylor?
Right, they fill the unexpired.
Nice job, Gene.
Thank you, Gene. Right off the top of her head.
He's got it right off the top of her head, he absolutely does.
I'm impressed. So let me begin again. Milford Youth Commission, the two vacancies for terms expiring six thirty nineteen, Lisa White and Ron Taylor.
I would second that.
Next, that's a second. You want to just get those two first and then we'll go through the rest of them?
Okay, so that's a second, okay, so I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
Next, I'd like to appoint Francis Traficanti, Darlene Delude, and Angelo Caligioni, terms expiring six thirty twenty.
I would second that.
And I'll vote in favor and make that unanimous.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. And we brought a lot of new people in.
We certainly did.
We've changed up some things. I know my daughter's been after me to make sure there are more women represented. We've done that as well. And I've actually heard that a lot, not just from my daughter, but.
Every father better listen to their daughter.
That's the problem with raising an independent, independent young woman.
Oh, that was great. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, wow.
Thank you, Rick, for preparing that. You gave us a lot of information to work with.
Gene did a great job.
Chief, since you're here, do you want to just do, go to your non-civil service? Because you're last on the new business, but you're here, so.
I want to thank Rick for putting me last, knowing that we're going into executive session.
Oh, that's, oh, you get to stick around anyway. All right, well, you're here.
Oh, I love being with you, but it's not all night, you know? So I, I sent a memo to the board. We, we did approve the policy with the board to hire through non-civil service process. We've worked that out with town council and his opinion is we do not have to go to the legislature because it was put in through town meetings, so it comes out through town meeting.
It's a legislative body, right?
Right, so we can proceed. In, in going back through the policy and now laying out the actual step by step by step, there were two things that came to my attention. The first was the issue of people that are coming in as so-called lateral transfers. And reading the language, you can read it either way. It was a bit confusing, so I attempted to clear that up, which simply says that those people that we agreed would be in those exempted slots, so they have two years of service with another agency or two years combined as a police officer dispatcher, auxiliary police officer, as long as they're academy trained, would come in. So this simply says that they will proceed for the preliminary, you know, preliminary interview. And then in clearing that up, the next thing was dealing with the people that are coming from an examination. They then proceed from the entrance examination. And lastly, was the issue of drug and alcohol testing related to, it was up towards the front of the policy and I didn't want someone to end up being confused and say, oh, we're going to have you do it before we even interview you. Because the state law and case law and MCAD, you, you have to give tender or job offer. So you tender your job offer.
Oh, to even require?
Yeah, so it's contingent and it's contingent upon medical examination, psychological examination. That's the stage that we have to do that. So I simply moved that language over under the medical because that's who's going to do it. And.
That's what we do as well.
So other than that, there's no change. It's just, it's put in the contingency where it belongs so that somewhere down the road, someone doesn't read the policy and say, oh, this is what the community wants and lo and behold, we're in violation of the law. So I did discuss it with town council. He's in full agreement and.
And so you'll need a vote on the new language?
Yes, I brought it to the board, so I would ask that, and I did send you a copy.
Yes.
And you'll see that the date's changed to this evening so that the board approved the policy that I submitted to the board, which is dated six nineteen seventeen.
Any questions, Bill?
I don't, and by the way, everything is a work in progress. I expect that, you know, any good policy manuals getting updated, modified, clarified over time. So I'm not troubled by this at all and it actually just makes it a better document, more clear for me. And I thank you, Chief, for putting the work and time into it. So I'd make a motion that we approve the changes as outlined by the police chief and reviewed by council. And specifically, I see, I don't have a document, Chief.
I'm sorry, I.
Dated the nineteenth.
Do you have yours in the back?
Is it?
That's where mine is.
Oh, okay, maybe that's what it is.
You might have just missed this page because that's the, that's the title.
So that's here.
That's the older one?
I was going to say the same thing.
Oh, we only have the, the March one.
You have the one that got marked up and had the March date.
Okay.
That's the one with sixteen seventeen.
All right, you stated it in language, but, okay. It's all one, okay. So so I make a motion to approve the documents and recommendations of the police chief and those reviewed by town council. And the document specifically dated six nineteen seventeen.
And I would second that.
Before I vote, Chief, I did have one question.
Yes.
And I'm going to support it, it's your show, but I just, it was odd, but I'm sure you probably have an answer for it. Section six says preliminary interviews we conduct to determine which candidates move forward, so on and so forth. The Police Association may recommend three police officers to serve and the chief will select the officer. I think that's great. If the Milford Police Association does not make any recommendations, the chief of police may select an officer. This is the only part I have a question on. And any other person said the chief sees fit to conduct preliminary interviews. So is that like, you're deputing your people within or is there a reason why you'd bring other people in?
The discussion with the, when we met with council for the association, your process would break down if, let's say, you were having a moment with the association.
Ah, okay.
They decide, well, we don't want to give you a name. Well, now you don't get to hire people. So.
I get it, okay.
So Alan Shapiro said, when I gave him language, he said, I agree with you, Tom, and I've dealt with Alan for.
Yep, they have the opportunity to participate.
Yeah, so if we're presenting an opportunity to them, if they refuse the opportunity, then we can. And we can then reach outside the department. In other words, we could go and pull in police officers from another community, neighboring community or supervise from neighboring community, that's all. And they understand that.
Nope, and that makes perfect sense. I was just curious.
All those unions, too.
That hit me and goes, why wouldn't they want to, why wouldn't they always want to appoint one of their own? But things happen.
You just never know when you're having a moment.
Okay, nope, fair enough.
On either side of the fence.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Before we go to the request for Middle School East, do we want to talk about the police dispatchers while the chief's here? Or does he not, do not opine into that or? It says under legal counsel, but that's our next.
I don't think the chief needs to weigh in on that.
Okay. I, I deal with them. There's no issue there.
Okay. I'm sure you don't have an issue about the voluntary.
Not at all, bargaining wise, no, honestly.
It seems to make sense.
It makes a lot of sense because there's a better understanding on the part of Mass Cop of the operation of the police agency and those dispatches. They actually represent dispatches in a number of departments. In the city of Boston, they represent EMS.
Oh, okay, wow.
So EMS is part of the Boston Police Patrolman's Association. So from a public safety perspective and dealing with Mass Cop and the attorneys that I just indicated, Alan Shapiro, I've, I've dealt with that law firm for thirty years. I, I know every lawyer in the place. You know, sometimes, as I said, you have your moments, but for the most part, you, you can resolve matters very quickly, very easily. So Mass Cop assuming the dispatches versus the laborers' union.
Yeah, that's why, it seemed like a no-brainer.
It's apples and oranges and you're bringing oranges over with oranges, to be honest with you.
And just for the, for the folks watching, the, the Milford Public Safety Dispatchers Association sent us correspondence asking us to, I guess, support them voluntarily, leaving the, the laborers' union and moving to Mass Cop, which again, makes, makes a lot of sense, okay. Do we have to take a motion on that and a vote?
Just a motion for to sign the notice of voluntary recognition. That's the first step.
Okay.
Once that's signed, it's posted for twenty days and I think it's emailed to any affected employee. And then once the twenty-day period's elapsed, then there'd be a voluntary recognition agreement, as I understand it.
Okay.
And this is nine employees.
Yep.
It's the nine full-time employees. The part-timers are still under Article Two.
Oh, that's right, okay, perfect. Is there a motion?
Yeah, why don't I try to do it the way Jerry's laid it out? Why don't I make a motion that we accept the language of the voluntary recognition pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one fifty E and the Rules and Regulations of Commonwealth of Massachusetts Labor Relations Committee, four five six C M R fourteen dot zero six, Sections five B. Notice is hereby given to Milford Town, the Town of Milford intends to voluntarily recognize without an election the Milford Public Safety Dispatchers Association. Massachusetts Coalition of Police, A F L C I O, is the recognized exclusive bargaining representative for the bargaining unit consisting of all public safety dispatchers employed by the town owner. Should that say full-time?
Yeah.
For clarity?
It's actually full-time, yes.
Okay, let me strike that and say bargaining unit consisting of all public safety dispatchers employed full-time, full-time by the Town of Milford. This notice shall be posted for a period of twenty days and shall be forwarded to effective employees via email. And we can sign if this, this would.
And if the board has one, sure.
Certainly not the one I wrote all over.
I have one if it's such a, a D B, but.
And I'll vote in favor as well and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
We'll post your thoughts, Will.
There's at least no doodles on that one. The next agenda item is to evaluate or comment on the RFP, the proposed RFP for Middle School East. Spent obviously a lot of conversation on this. Obviously, Bill, you were on the committee for it. Mike, you've spent. Mike, you spent some extra time with it, being a member of the school committee. So I don't know, what's the pleasure of the board? Is, is this something we want to spend a little bit more time on? I know I certainly wouldn't be offended if we took a, took it under advisement for a couple, maybe at least until the next meeting, because I think we go three weeks until our next meeting.
Yes.
Unless you gentlemen are ready to move on it.
No, I would, I'd like some time to review.
And I would as well, Mike. So I'm glad you said it, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for providing that. There's a great deal here. That, that building and its site is important to the community and deciding what we're going to do, how we might go out and take proposals. Should, we should give it the amount of time it deserves. I would agree.
Quite honestly, you know, I was thinking about that, this today, that, you know, and even if we think so, we'll take it up at the next meeting, and then honestly, even if the three of us have to have a, you know, a posted meeting, but just a working session, where all we do is so the three of us can get on the same page over this. And I think that's, that might be something that we
Yeah, good idea.
we might want to think about as well.
Makes sense.
Great, thank you.
With the three of us being school committee members.
Exactly. That's funny. Next items are the correspondence. We have a resignation from Jean Marie Simmons. She regrets to inform us that she has to resign from the cultural committee effective June thirtieth. But she thanked us very much for the opportunity to serve, and she thoroughly enjoyed her years with her committee members. There's a motion to accept.
A move with separate, with regret. I would second and like to say thank you for her years of service.
I'll vote in favor as well. That's unanimous. Next piece of correspondence is a copy of a Milford Park Department letter, and thank you, Rick and Gene. I know I didn't reach out to the, to the Parks Department. I asked you folks to, and you obviously did that, so I appreciate it. Time was tough that day, and you folks saved me again. But this is in regard to the American Legion. Again, the Town of Milford, very, very proud that we actually got a chance, again, this year to host the state tournament. And that's in, in July. We haven't had that opportunity since two thousand and five. And so hopefully, we can get some good turnouts during that tournament, and, and we already submitted our letter from the board's selectmen. Well, actually, Rick, I think, I think Chris mentioned that you, you guys had already spoke, Chris Marcone and yourself.
I spoke. I have drafted a letter that you gentlemen have signed that will go to them also.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much for that, because in the, in the book that some of us are, are out knocking on doors, raising money for, thanks, Scotty, that that these two letters go right in the front of the book, and, you know, it sends a message to all the folks coming from the town, how supportive we are of it and everything like that. So as a, as a board member of the, of the Legion, I really appreciate that. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Any other correspondence? Rick, Mike? Bill? Well, we are going into executive session, so we'll have to make, have a motion and then a roll call.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, a motion to go to, into executive session for the purposes outlined for Milford discussion with Town Council regarding Milford Water Company, Town Council regarding a claim against the town for police chief, discuss nuisance properties, also to discuss with Attorney Pettenary collective bargaining related to highway, and to go over grievances brought forward at the fire department.
I would second that.
And I'll vote and make that unanimous, vote in favor and make that unanimous. Roll call.
I vote in favor.
I vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
That's, that's unanimous, and we will not be returning to regular session. Have a good night.